This meeting of the Gadsden City Council, I come to order that the Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris is absent today. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray, Lord. We're thankful for another day. We are thankful for the opportunity to be out and about as we live and breathe and among our families and our friends. We ask that your hand be involved in all decisions that are made at the local, state, and federal level, and we ask that all processes of voting today will be done in a manner pleasing and according to your side. We ask for peace, and we ask for reason, that we can all come together and work for the betterment of man universally. These things we ask in the name of your Son Jesus. We'll be ever grateful to give you and him the honor, the glory, and the praise. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the City Council meeting held on May the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of May the 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor?
I have a proclamation for Lesi Mae Pearson Darby. Is she here, or anybody here with her? Okay. You want to, is she coming? We can do it later. Let her get here. That'd be good. This lady's 100 years old today.
Yeah, we can wait on her.
Come back to it. Is that what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
She's 100 years old. We can wait.
Unfinished business, A is an ordinance adopting smoke-free air ordinance. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It prohibits smoking in most public places. In places of employment except cigar bars and retail tobacco stores. The fine is $50 for each violation, and noncompliance by management is punishable by a fine of $100 for the first event, $200 for the second within one year, and $500 for each additional violation within one year. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, based on the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee, we'd like to ask for a table until June the 10th. At a time, the together committee a chance to meet on June 5th.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend that. I guess we'll have to amend the motion now, will we not?
Yeah. You'll have to amend it.
I make a motion we amend that to be permanent or indefinite, indefinite table.
Do we vote on first?
Okay, so your motion is to amend Councilman Reed's motion?
Correct, and make it indefinite table.
Okay.
When do we vote on first?
Do you have a second for your motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a little second. Vote on amendment first, right?
Yes, you would vote on the amendment and then go back and vote on the main motion. So this is the motion to amend the motion to table to indicate an indefinite table.
Correct.
Councilman Williams?
No.
This is to amend?
To amend?
The motion to make the table indefinite?
No.
Avery?
No.
Eccles?
No.
I'm sorry, didn't?
He said no.
No, okay. Stewart?
Yes, please.
Cannon?
Yes.
Reed?
No.
Okay, the Councilman Stewart's amendment to the motion does not carry. So we're back to the main motion of tabling the ordinance for one week.
Well, until June the 10th.
Until June the 10th. Tabling the ordinance until June the 10th.
Is that one week?
Okay, now we're ready for this vote. Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
Eccles?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries to table until June the 10th.
I'm not mad because I got shot down, but if y'all can solve that problem between what's right for, to protect somebody's health, an employee's health, and what a business person's right to run his business, if y'all can solve that problem, I'll certainly go along with it.
I hope we can do that in the committee meeting on June the 5th. And by the way, I do know that three and seven is 10. The 10th. Okay.
I'd just like to say, I just want somebody to explain to me who in the world is going to enforce this ordinance, not the way it was written, I'm hoping, because you had the building department and the fire department in that to enforce this ordinance. And I just would like to know who's really going to enforce it, and how they're going to enforce it.
That's gonna be brought up at the committee meeting. There's two or three things that you brought up, and I think Robert brought up one. Bill definitely has brought up some good reasoning. So we'll be looking into all that.
I just have a problem with people going in the tobacco store, smoking, or being allowed to smoke in a tobacco store. If that's the case, and I don't go to the liquor store, but maybe we all allow them to go in the liquor store and get a pint off the shelf, drink it.
Well, the way the ordinance is now, you're allowing?
Let's let, let's let, let's let the two weeks or 10 days.
Yeah, let's don't just talk about it. The way it is written now, you let a tobacco, I mean a cigar bar smoke, and you won't let another bar smoke.
It's not a bar.
You look at the big trouble when you do that.
It's not a bar. I said tobacco store.
Everybody has something they don't take your care for.
We'll address that on the, on the 5th.
We got a committee meeting there.
Good luck.
B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1175 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3. The last known owners are Margaret M. Milner. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April the 29th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, since our pre-council meeting lasted a little bit longer than anticipated, I didn't get a chance to call the property owners. This is a burn structure, so I'm gonna ask for a seven-day table, so I have an opportunity to talk to them about the options they'll have on this property.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table.
C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at number 8 Lakefront Avenue in District 6. The last known owners are State of Alabama Chad McLeon Quinn and Cumberly Don Quinn. The resolution is also tabled for 30 days on April the 29th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to extend this for 30 more days, please. We have an owner that's trying to buy this piece of property from State of Alabama, and State of Alabama's not cooperating with them right now, so we're gonna see if we can't speed this process up, and maybe this'll be the last 30 days these new owners can take over and clean this piece of property up and have it up and going.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
That's it.
Oh, it's a table. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
N is a resolution authorizing agreement with Jones Blair Waldron Tucker. This is supplemental agreement number two for a cultural resource assessment survey required by ALDOT for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge Replacement Project over Black Creek. The amount is $1,375. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Can the engineer give us what we're talking about here, and how long we're talking about before that bridge can be worked on?
I can touch on one of those. What we have here is the cultural resource survey, and this is for concurrence for the Alabama Historical Commission. We have preliminary concurrence from the Historical Commission, but anytime you're having to acquire additional property for right-of-way, you have to do this cultural resource assessment, and so that's, that's what this is about. That's the reason it's required by, by ALDOT. I can't really give a timeline yet because of the concurrences, having to get Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Army Corps, Historical Commission, and there's really no baseline timeline. It just depends on the project. So unfortunately, all I can tell you is that we're in the process, we're submitting for concurrences, but we're kind of at somebody else's mercy right now.
Because it didn't make sense when it says cultural resource assessment on a bridge. I mean, come on. But anyway.
I think the biggest thing, the biggest thing they gotta do is move the water line.
Yeah.
Like that was...
But I mean, he explained it pretty much.
Yeah. I didn't understand a word he said, but it sounded good to me.
Yeah, okay.
What on bridges? Chad, what's the projected time to open the Hickory Street Bridge? It's really working a hardship on a lot of people in South Gadsden.
Yes, sir. Design process, and it, very similar. We're having to go through the U.S. Army Corps on that bridge, and we're trying to determine what we can do as far as construction goes on that bridge. That used to be where the live Black Creek ran through that portion, and then Black Creek got moved over, I think in the 1960s, a little bit further down, closer to Hickory Street, closer to the plant. And so what we're trying to say is now that there's not active flow, if we can get away with putting a culvert there and minimizing the opening, but we're having to go through the Army Corps because that's in a floodway.
You might as well talk about the other bridge while you're there, the Level Street Bridge.
Hey, Chad, I wasn't, I wasn't saying it to you that I didn't understand what you said. I've never seen so many hoops and jumps and turns to do anything, anything you do, and now you don't. I don't see how in the world you keep up with it. That's why I don't, it's unbelievable.
It's frustrating.
On Black Creek, have you taken a picture of the big hole in the middle of it and sent to them?
They're aware of the condition, but unfortunately, their review don't have anything to do with that.
It's called unfunded mandates from government. They want you to do everything, jump through the hoop, but they don't provide pause.
I'm calling for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
This is the first reading, is an ordinance amending City Code Section 74 through 91 to add certain business license classification codes. This adds the following classification codes and their fee to the business license schedule: Foam Product Manufacturing, Gold Recovery, Non-Fares Metal Production, Waste Grease, Promoters of Performing Arts, Sports, and so forth, Petting Zoo, Car Wash, Independent Contractor. This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. New businesses, are there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
President, I think Mike is gonna be here.
Well, we got, we got all kinds of people that want to talk today.
Okay.
You called him Mike, all kinds of people.
He might be bigger than that.
Good morning. There's been some interest expressed with the Public Works Department about where we're at with grass cutting. Just want to give you guys a brief overview of where we're at. We currently have...
State your name and address.
My name is Mike Hilton. I'm with the Public Works Department with the City of Gadsden.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. We are currently, we have about 50 employees working hard, trying to catch up or get caught up with the grass. The last couple of weeks, we've worked approximately 300 nuisance abatement lots. We still have two sections, areas in town that we have to finish on nuisance abatement. That's the downtown area and the Tuscaloosa Avenue area. Those should be caught up in the next couple of weeks. We are mowing currently all right-of-ways that are undesignated. When I say that, if you'll see, I left you a copy of the ordinance that you guys have. It states that Public Works will cut right-of-ways as long as they're not in front of a residence or a business. Sometimes there's some confusion that the, the right-of-way, the ditch in front of your house is an area that's city right-of-way, so we should cut it versus the residence there. We don't do that, and we'll try to be a little more proactive as getting this information out here in the near future. But if it's a residence or a business along the right-of-way, which we maintain all undeveloped areas, we have a sidearm bush hog, we have a curb elevation mower, three other bush hogs that go around, and we run a route through the entire city, and if there's high grass there, we try to cut those, but we don't want to cut where we're not responsible to cut. We do maintain the state right-of-ways as far as Meagam Boulevard, Albert Raines Boulevard, areas like Sansom Avenue, some medians that we do cut. So it would, it would help us, if you guys can help get that information out too, that if you have a ditch in front of your house, you're responsible for cutting your grass all the way to the road. If there's a sidewalk in a park strip between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter, you of course would cut that also. We do get several calls on that, and we try to explain that as best we can. In addition to cutting the 300 nuisance abatement lots in the last couple of weeks, we've got about 150 total more to go. And when I say we, we are in conjunction with Parks and Rec, when we do nuisance abatement lots, we partner with Parks and Rec, and they do a great job of getting together with us and getting all this grass cut. We didn't do it all ourselves. We helped, we helped them, or they helped us, whichever way you want to look at it. We do currently have about 50 employees that are working hard every day, dedicated just to grass, sweet eaters, finished mowers, the other tractors that we have in place. We cut rain or shine, so if you see us out there with an umbrella, you'll know what's going on. Could I entertain any questions, guys?
I just want clarification. You say within the next week or so, you're gonna be in the Tuscaloosa Avenue area?
Yes, sir. We, the same folks that are cutting the nuisance abatement lots are also responsible for the other medians, parks, all other right-of-ways that we do cut, so if we go a long stretch, it just gets out of hand on the other side. So we had to pull off for a week, a week and a half, something like that. We hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, will be dedicated back to nuisance abatement, Tuscaloosa Avenue and the downtown area, and the majority of those are on the Tuscaloosa Avenue area. We've got about 100 in that area, about 50 in the downtown area, so we want to get the 100 knocked out first and then cut over to the downtown side. If you, in that regard, you can call Public Works anytime, (256) 549-4704, and let us know about grass, but we work at the, at the request of John Ashley in the Community Development Department. These lots that we're cutting, these nuisance abatement lots, are directed to us from him. I don't have John's number with me. I'm sure you can get that here with the 549-4500 number. They can direct it to John, but he is responsible for deciding what we cut and don't cut on the nuisance lots. He forwards those to us, and we're kind of the working arm of that side of it. So, but if you have any questions regarding grass or grass cutting, don't hesitate to call us, (256) 549-4704. Thank you. City?
Thank you, Mike. First Friday. Please state your name and address for the City Clerk.
I will. I'm Kay Moore. I'm Director for Downtown Gadsden, and thanks to the council, the mayor, for listening to me. Again, before I start on First Friday, I want to say, if you were not at Musical Monday yesterday, DJ Buster Porch, who is always here, and I'm gonna name him Chef Curly Daramis, they put on a show yesterday, y'all, for us, at the Water Wall, one of the most well-hidden places, I would say, that between the Senior Activities Center and the Pittman Theater. We had great music provided by DJ Buster yesterday from 11:30 to 1:30, and a great crowd out there. It was just a lot of fun. Bring your lunch, come and sit and enjoy, just get back and relax, and Buster Porch has got something with the weather. I'm gonna have to line him up for First Friday with me, so I don't know. But every Monday from now through September, or whenever, he'll have no rain on Mondays. So 11:30 to 1:30, y'all come out for that. So it's just a lot of fun. But this Friday is First Friday, and we have, our shops will be open late, we'll have, our restaurants will be open, we'll have some food vendors in the 400 block, we'll have art galleries open, you've got things that, Imagination Place for Kids, along with the Gadsden Museum of Art, they have activities planned. Just discover what is great about our downtown. We'll have music, more music probably this Friday than we've ever had on First Friday downtown, from 2nd up to in front of the Pittman Theater, over to the Back 40. I'm not even gonna tell you who all's gonna be there. I'm gonna encourage you to go to our website, downtowngadsden.com, and click on the First Friday page. It's there, and it's, it's a lot easier for y'all to do that than it is for me to read it out to you. But Classic Cars will come rolling in about 4:30. We'll close the streets about 4:15, and it's just gonna be a great night. James Spann is scheduled to be here on First Friday, and he's gonna be in between Trey Ragazzi and Blackstone's there in the 500 block, so if you want to come out and meet and talk to James, he is scheduled to be there. Now, his plans can change, but that's, that's the schedule as for right now. But do, go to our website, downtowngadsden.com, check out, check out the First Friday page. If you're not on our email list, if you will send me an email through the website, or call our office at (256) 547-8696, we'll put you on our, on our email list. So the Monday or the, before First Friday, and then on First Friday, we'll send you a list, and you can click on our merchants to see what's going on with there and the restaurants, and it's just, it's just a great way to keep in touch, so we'll be glad to add you to that list. Anybody have any questions to that? I think I'm, y'all all know how this rolls, so it's just a reminder, and I appreciate y'all always letting me come to talk about that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. You do a great job. Parks and Recreation?
I'm Kerry Payne, the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Gadsden, and before I let you know about a couple of events that we have going on, I want to read a letter to you that I received last Tuesday by email. It says, "The past two weeks have brought about several huge success stories for Gadsden Runners Club. None of, none of it would have been possible without the financial input and time investment made into the Black Creek Trail multi-use trail system. We have some of the best training facilities available free to the public right here in Gadsden, Alabama. As we close out the 2013-2014 trail season, I'm happy to tell you that we have five local residents who won their AIDS divisions and have earned free entry into the Exterra National Championship in Utah this fall. We have two residents who have earned entry into the Exterra World Championships in Hawaii. Thank you for your continued support, and we're looking forward to growing our local events and helping promote Gadsden and the many opportunities available to its residents and visitors." And this comes from a director or a board member of the Gadsden Runners Club, Glenn Ingram. So that's good news on the people using our trails and for training facilities, and the bike trails as well, because that's what a lot of them are doing as far as their training. They're getting off the Black Creek Trail and getting into the natural trails that we have, that we call our bike and walking trails. Right now, this, this weekend, starting tomorrow, they've been in town since last weekend. The hotels are telling me that they've been covered up with fishermen, so we're having the Southern Division Championship of the Bass Federation that's in town, and there's like 80 fishermen in this. Don't sound like a whole lot, but they're representing seven states, so they've been here with their wives and spouses and all since this past weekend. So the, the people are here in town, they start tomorrow, and the weigh-in will be at 2:30 at Cusa Landing tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday. They reduced down, I think, for the last day to 40 participants, and so we're glad to have them in town and staying in our hotels and eating at our restaurants. The other thing that I want to mention is our summer concert this Friday night. Kay mentioned the music downtown and all, and if you, once it's over at 9 o'clock, you need to come over to the amphitheater. We have a Eagles tribute band called Seven Bridges, and they'll be performing from 9 to 11. So if you like Eagles music, this'll be the place you need to be, so bring your coolers and cushions and come out and have a good time. It's free to the public. Thank you.
Kerry, let me ask you a question, please. Could you sort of tell them the numbers of the other two tournaments you had in town a couple of weeks? The High School Trail plus the State?
Yeah. Alabama Bass Trail, that the governor, we had 197 boats, which that was in April, and then the High School State Tournament, we had 220 for that weekend.
Two in a boat and three in a boat on the last one, is that right?
Yes, they were three in a boat on the, the High School one, because they had a guide with them, or whatever, an adult driving their boat, so they were here for, for two days as well. We did the weigh-in over at the amphitheater, and I don't know if any, I think y'all seen the pictures. We passed them around, and we had probably 500 to 600 people in the amphitheater for the weigh-in, so it was very successful.
And y'all, y'all fed about 700 and something on the Friday night before that?
Yes, about 750. There was nowhere to sit. Convention hall was full.
There was nowhere to drive down through either with all those boats.
Yeah, we kind of had a large amount, we sure did, but that was a good problem.
That's a good problem.
Yeah, they, they were in the motels and restaurants for two or three days. They liked to find the fish, you know, in practice.
Yeah, and also too, I'm glad you asked me a question, because it made me think of something. Our swimming pool over at Sixth Street is officially open. It opened yesterday, and actually, I went by there. I think they do some swim lessons in the morning, so if you're interested, the YMCA manages the pool, just give the Y a call. I think they do some swim lessons in the morning. I went by about 1:30, and there was probably 20 waiting to get in. They couldn't let anymore get in the fence into the pool because it was so packed, and that's usually the way it works, first week or so, the people come out, and then after that, it kind of thins out a little bit, but anybody that's wanting to swim and cool off, that's where they need to go.
Yeah, culture laws too, aren't they furnishing some art teachers?
They are. They're doing some projects. So they're, and actually, we got a group that's cooking for them, the kids as well one time a week. I think they're cooking them hot dogs. They did it last year, a group of men from that area over there. I'm not even sure what organization they represent.
Carver High Class.
Carver High School, yeah.
I think it's 65, I think.
Yeah.
And by the way, their sign has been torn down or something. We need to get their sign back up, and they needed a fan. We could ruffle up a fan for them.
I got them a fan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got them a fan over there, so that, that should be good for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, she's here.
Okay. Remarks by the mayor and the council?
Does he want to do the cross election?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
Somebody just said, for one time, you're not the oldest person in the day.
That's a bad rhyme.
So we probably got somebody that's older than you. Not a whole lot, I think, just.
Not a whole lot. She's born, today is her birthday, June the 3rd. Whereas today, June the 3rd, 2014, we gathered together to pay tribute to Miss Lesi Mae Pearson Darby on the occasion of her 100th birthday. On June 3rd, 1914, in Cusa County, Lesi Mae Pearson Darby, the youngest of three siblings, entered the world, making her parents, June and Annie Lee Darby, a happy couple. After the death of her parents, Lesi Mae was reared by her grandparents. She later married Cephas Pearson and moved to Gadsden, Alabama, where she still resides today. Lesi Mae Pearson Darby reared five children, Billy, Raymond, Kerry, Julius, and Diane. She is blessed with 18 grandchildren. She is blessed with 18 grandchildren, 47 great-grandchildren, and 13 great-great-grandchildren.
All right.
Lesi Mae Pearson Darby worked in various places, from the fields, she was a maid, she was a helper in the school lunchroom, she served as a nanny, and she worked at her daughter's daycare. Lesi Mae lived a very simple life. She became a member of Macedonia Baptist Church, where she is the oldest living faithful member of Macedonia Church. She was honored for that occasion, and also, she was nominated as one of Gadsden's Most Outstanding Mothers by the AKAs. Lesi Mae, an incredible woman and a wonderful mother. She taught her children discipline and respect for others. She is honored and respected by all of her contributions to her family, her community, and for her positive outlook on life, whereas Miss Darby attributes her long life to her love of God and to her church. Therefore, be it resolved that I Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, proclaim June 7th, 2014, as Lesi Mae Pearson Darby Day in the City of Gadsden, and ask all of the citizens to be proud of this, and if you see her, wish her a happy birthday.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to thank the Mayor of Gadsden and the Council for honoring my mother for 100 years. You know, that's a long time, that's a century, and I am so blessed, blessed, to have my mother with me, you know, especially with her help and her full faculty. And I just want to thank you guys so much.
I think Mr. Echols was very appreciative of her being here today. He said, "This is the first time that somebody in this building older than him has been in here," so he's very appreciative of having her here today.
Good Lord's been good to both of us.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, we're down to the Council. Mayor, you've been, you want to start today?
Yeah, I'll say something. I'll say one, two things real quick. I want to mention a little more on the grass cutting. Be sure and look at Channel 99 if you're looking at it, and you can get some information about who to call. And it has been raining a lot, and I know it's a slow process, but we are staying after it, and we're looking at trying to do a few things a little different to maybe speed it up, so maybe it won't be as many people. But on the right of ways, be sure that you know that you cut between the sidewalk and the curb, because it's sort of like when you got your yard cut and you don't cut that little part, it looks like you got on a new suit with muddy shoes. So, you know, need to clean that up. But anyway, thanks for all your patience, and that's really all I got to say.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow. Again, I want to congratulate Miss Lesi Mae on her 100th birthday. That is amazing. That is truly amazing. Want to recognize a dear friend of mine, Mr. Gary Hodges in the back. We appreciate you being here.
I think you just want to introduce someone, too.
Okay.
Go ahead. You go do it?
Okay.
I think Mr. Hodges wants to introduce someone, too, I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
If that's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor. I'm Gary Hodges, General Manager, WTPJ, Full Power Christian Television Station, located here in Gadsden. We're at 313 Rosedale Avenue. Sometimes it's fortunate, but sometimes unfortunate, we're next door to Chick-fil-A. We've been, currently this month, WTPJ is 28 years old this month. Went on the air full-time, 1986. And I like to think of our station as kind of piggybacking the cause of Gadsden and the wonderful things that happen in Gadsden, not only in the entire Birmingham television market, but literally around the world. Wherever we go, you guys go, because we are licensed to the City of Gadsden. And so we're so very thankful to be a partner with you, and we do see ourselves as a true partner with you, addressing not only the issues and problems of the community, but working together to forge solutions. And as you very well know, as the days go, it gets a little more difficult. We want to pledge ourselves to be even more of a partner in the future with you. We have a public affairs program that's seen weekly, many times weekly, all over the Birmingham television market on all the cable systems, and also off-air, we're streaming five networks. Our main network, a church channel network, a 24/7 youth network, 24/7 children's network, and also a 24/7 Hispanic network. And you can reach us with a digital TV with antennas. We have not persuaded the cable companies to multicast us yet, but we're still working diligently on that. But we thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. From the bottom of my heart, I really do thank all of you for that. And I want to ask you to be more involved with us in this manner. If you see issues and problems in the community that you think needs a broader scope than just this room here and discussing and finding solutions, please feel free to call our Public Affairs Director and let them know of the problems, because as a full-power station in the Birmingham market, we have to have a broad sweep over the entire viewing area. But in the future, we want to zero more on the City of Gadsden, and then your voices are heard through our public affairs program, and the impact of that and the message you bring will be broadcast over the whole, have an impact over the whole viewing area. I would like to introduce LaShayla Love to you. She's our new Public Affairs Director, and we're so blessed to have her, and she's going to be working very closely, more in the future, with each one of you.
As he said, I'm LaShayla Love, and I just wanted to introduce myself, and I kind of want to provide clarity, because Gary's a firecracker. He gets going, and he goes, so I'm kind of like the calm voice that comes behind him. Just want to let you know that we do have Praise the Lord Station, and we have Join Our Town. Join Our Town will basically allow you all to come on and discuss issues that we have. We take ascertainments to see what our top issues are, and we do want to address them, not only address them, but come to a common solution to resolve them. And we are here, a lot of people are not knowledgeable of our station, and if you have issues that you want to bring to our attention that we are not aware of, I can be reached at (256) 546-8860, and that's TBN at 313 Rosedale, across from Chick-fil-A. And I look forward to working with many of you soon. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Gary. And I, you know, at the risk of, my daughters often warn me about recycling my stories, so at the risk of recycling one, I do want to tell the fact, or communicate the fact, that Gary allowed me to work with him early on, right after I graduated from college, actually. And the night that my first, oldest daughter was born, I was at Gary's station. So I was spared the experience of watching her actually come into the world that night. But I definitely appreciate the family approach and the caring touch that he provided me at that time in my life, so I appreciate that, and he'll always be a friend of mine. So thank you, Gary. I definitely appreciate it.
I want to ask Gary one question. I know him really well, too. Did you teach him all the big words?
Actually, truth be known, you taught him a few.
I taught him a couple during basketball, six years ago.
Just a couple other quick items. The, I thought it was an interesting point, and I'm just kind of throwing this out here for discussion, because I think it's kind of taken on the national landscape. Seattle, if many of you have picked up on it, Seattle just passed an ordinance, the City of Seattle, Washington, passed an ordinance bumping their minimum wage up to $15 an hour. Now, you know, before people start to get, before Lisa strokes out and before people start to get nervous, you know, not anything that's going to come from this council or me proposing anything of that scale. Obviously, cost of living issues are much different in Seattle, Washington. But I thought it was an interesting point, because when I hear things like that, I start to research what's going on at City Hall. We actually, the City of Gadsden, has actually for some time now, definitely in the two terms that the current administration has been at City Hall, the City of Gadsden actually pays a premium above the minimum wage. So there's no city employee that actually makes at the minimum wage. So they're actually paid at a premium above the city wage, the minimum wage, and I think it's around 50 cents. So, you know, I'd like for us to just look at, and again, you know, we're a long way from what Seattle's doing. They're looking, they're doing, what they're doing is going to impose a new minimum wage on the entire city, so not just City Hall, but it's going to impose something on business. I'm not, at this point, not open to anything like that, but I'd like for us to consider, you know, what it would mean for us financially to consider a bump up to even the premium that we have right now. You know, again, this kind of discussion is dominating the national landscape. People are struggling to make a living, a livable, a reasonable living at the minimum wage, and there's some good data that supports the fact that the minimum wage may not be a livable wage at this point. So again, I think it's important to consider that, and I think it's important to look at it. I want to applaud the city for what it's done without being prompted, and that's pay above that minimum wage, pay a premium. But again, you know, without committing us, I'd like for us to look at that. I'd like for us to study the feasibility of that, and maybe that's something I could pass on to the Finance Committee to actually look at.
You did.
All right. The last thing I want to say is, of course, the 800-pound gorilla in the room today is not Robert. The 800-pound gorilla today is the smoking ordinance. And of course, you know, I think you guys know that for me, the one important thing that needs to come of this, because there are going to be a lot of opinions. I think we've put some good work into putting together what I consider to be a balanced, pragmatic, and practical solution to the smoking issue. But what I want us to avoid is the hypersensitive and hyper-emotional debate and expressly politicized debate that comes out of it. I think that's when it all goes negative. So it'll be interesting, again, I'm anxious for us to move forward with this, and I'm anxious for us to put something together that we can move forward on. But again, my goal is that we avoid the hypersensitive, hyper-emotional, and politicized debate that comes out of it, because nobody benefits from that. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Robert?
Just want to say happy birthday again to Miss Lesi Mae, Castle. 100 years old. Wow. We're going to get there one day, hopefully. Just want to remind everybody, today is voting day. Please, ma'am, and please, sir, go to the polls. It's very, very important. This is one of those off-year elections, sort of, everybody turns out during the presidential election, but we have some very important state and local races going on, so I would encourage everybody to go out and vote. Anytime you have an opportunity to vote, that's your right, and that's one of the things that we try to encourage up here. So please, ma'am, and please, sir, go to the polls and vote for the candidate of your choice, because tomorrow, when someone is elected and he's not your choice, and you didn't go vote, you're the one, you're the cause of that. So we actually go vote.
I'll just echo that. I was going to remind everybody, please get out and vote today. Not necessarily like John Daly said, vote early and vote often, you don't have to do that, but do go vote. That's all I got.
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Okay. No, how many people out there have voted this morning? Raise your hand. How about that? Absolutely. That's a good, that's a good one. You know, I often think, always think of veteran, but also thank his family and thank the people who supported the veteran. If we didn't have that, we'd be speaking Japanese or German. It's a deep subject, but that's just the way it is. That's all I have.
Okay, go vote.
Go vote.
This mayor's a juror.